What time was supposed to start?
Hmm?
What time was supposed to start?
We were supposed to start immediately. That was what, um... That's what Judy said. Well, she said about five minutes. Think of us in the media.
Sure.
It's good.
Come on, Peter, come on in here. Sitting out there talking.
Ann too, I don't see Ann.
Ann, what I got in.
I'll have it to the question.
Hey ma'am? Can you go round up the balance for council?
Sure.
Making hands in the library, Peter's walking in.
Making deals.
Maybe, yeah. Come in. She shouldn't have to fill any water.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, February 25th, 2013, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements, and I do not have any. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. First, I'd like to ask Evanda Thomas, our health director, to come up and fill everyone in on the start of this year's Women Out Walking event.
Good evening, Mayor Tezdo, city council members, city clerk Green, city manager Bob Kowitz, I'm Evanda Thomas Smith, and I want to share with you about the City of Evanston's Health Department, once again, will be sponsoring its Women Out Walking program. This is year five. It's a 12-week walking campaign to highlight the importance of physical activity for women. WOW, we affectionately term it, begins Saturday, March 23rd, 2013, with an orientation session at Evanston Township High School. The program runs from March 23rd to June 15th. Registration is currently open online at www.cityofevanston.org/wowregister, or you can call 847-866-2955, or you can email wow@cityofevanston.org. Throughout this campaign, women will not only be encouraged to walk, but they also will be exposed to a variety of activities that promote health and wellness and a healthy lifestyle. Walking teams will walk at their own pace, a self-determined schedule, and any venue they choose. City staff will be available to offer recommendations. Walkers will be encouraged to attend a monthly walk hosted by the Health Department. That will involve themes such as international awareness, going green, and philanthropy, which will encompass an alternate physical activity session. Studies show that regular physical activity at moderate intensity levels improves health and well-being, reduces stress, and decreases the risk for certain diseases. Physical activity need not be strenuous to be beneficial. Moreover, people of all ages can benefit from participation in moderate-intensity physical activity. So WOW is open to women of all ages, all fitness levels, individual walkers, or teams of up to five are encouraged to preregister by March 18th. Please know that registration will remain open until the kickoff, which again is March 23rd. Participation in this year's program is $5 per person. So hope to see you Saturday, March 23rd, at orientation. We begin at 8:00 a.m. sharply until noon at Evanston Township High School. Parking is free. Walkers will be provided with pedometers and instructions on how to track their steps online. There will also be exercise sampler classes, several guest speakers, and free health screenings during the orientation session. So for additional information or register contact the WOW program at 847-866-2955, or wowofcityofevanston.org. I'm sorry, that's wow@cityofevanston.org.
Excuse me, Director Thomas Alderman-Grover has questions.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Thomas Smith, how many women started in the first WOW, five years ago?
Year one, our target was 50. We had 500 women... 500 participants, I'm sorry.
How many last year?
And last year was 1,000. The most we've ever had was in year 2010, and we had 1,100 women complete the 12-week program.
All right.
So our aim is to target 1,000 women.
You'll be there.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to have Kate Todd, my executive assistant, come up. As we talked a little earlier this evening regarding the item on the Fourth of July Parade, Kate has been sort of worrying about the 150 celebrations, has been the city's representative on the celebration group that the Evanston 150 organizations created. Kate is also responsible for all of the various items that we have made with the logo, and she's here to introduce those and to tell people how they can purchase them if they would like to do so. Kate, good evening.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Green, and, well, City Manager Bob Kowitz, I am Kate Todd, in the City Manager's office. And as Wally said, we are... This is our 150th year, and so we're kicking off a plan to offer some items for sale. And Clerk Green has kindly offered to sell these in the clerk's office for us. We have three things right now. The bag, reusable bag, it's about 12 by 15.
And Kate, you probably need to turn around because of the...
No.
We're working on that, by the way, but...
So we will sell these, we thought for about... Let's go back to the microphone. Five dollars, yes. Five dollars for the bags.
Which is about our cost.
These are basically at cost. And then we have magnets. They're maybe not refrigerator magnets, car magnets, whatever. And these we thought we would sell for about $2 each, again.
That's right up. Came right up your mileage.
Refrigerator magnets. And our idea was that if people buy either the magnet or the bag, they can get a pin for free. And if they don't want to buy either, they could buy a pin for a dollar, which all of this is about our cost. So that's what we're hoping to do, and it was kind of first come, first served, and we'll see how long they last.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
A question then for the council. The magnet and the bags were ideas of the council when we first started talking about all of this. Are there any other items that you'd like us to investigate?
Car.
Car? We have several cars that we've already opened, so... If there's any ideas, please let me know, otherwise I think we will limit our production to those items and hope the people will be interested in purchasing them. So, Madam Mayor, that concludes my...
Thank you, Alderman Tendem.
Have we considered any kind of apparel, like t-shirts or that kind of thing, if we're, you know, in the Fourth of July Parade or something like that?
Beachwear, certainly. We will come up with the Evanston 150 collection, and we'll... But we can absolutely do t-shirts. We've actually have had the embroidery done, the masters filed to make the embroidery. So I think we'll make that available on a case-by-case basis on embroidery, but Kate, we can work on t-shirts and have those available as it gets warmer.
That concludes your report.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, before you give your communications, I did want to say I forgot to make sure that the press knows and that everyone knows that the artist who did Mayor Morton's portrait, Mr. Halsted, donated the portrait and his time.
That's amazing.
There was some confusion about that, and I thought that everyone knew, so I wanted to be sure that that was clear. City Clerk, did you have communications?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Morton, please turn your head. Just want to make... Let you know that...
You better do it right, she's looking at you.
Just want to let you know that campaign season is in full swing. All candidates, please be sure that you do not put your signs and posters on the parkways. I got that right this time. Early voting begins March 25th through April the 6th, from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. They'll be here at the Civic Center in room 2200. Also on Friday, I mean, on Saturdays from 9:00 to 5:00, and Sundays from 9:00 to 3:00. 9:00 to 12, I'm sorry. So come out, vote early, vote once, or vote on Election Day. That's my analysis for this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next is citizen comment. Welcome, citizen comments. Citizen comment is intended to foster dialogue in a respectful and civil manner. Citizen comments are requested to be made with these guidelines in mind. I'm going to call the first four speakers. If you would come up, give your name and address, and you each have three minutes. Dick Peach, Kim Fisher, Jamie Evans, and... All right, I am stuck. 1028 Ashland Inoa Musala. I apologize. Thank you.
Good evening. Dick Peach, I live at 1414 Greenleaf in Evanston. I'm here tonight in strong support of the new proposal for the brewery and restaurant on... Proposed for Howard Street. I think the people involved, I've known them for a while now, and I don't think we could have a more intelligent and a more gifted group of people who run restaurants and a brewery than the two people who want to do this. Jamie and Debbie have got a track record of success here in Evanston with everything else they've done, including the Celtic Knot, and I think it's going to be a great asset. I think the chamber's going to be right in line with that, and I think the city's going to gain an awful lot, so I hope you all will support this very strongly tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Fisher at 1146 Elmwood. Madam Mayor, council member, City Manager Bob Kowitz, Clerk Green. I'm also the vice chair of the Evanston Mental Health Board, and I speak tonight in that capacity. The Mental Health Board would like to thank the mayor, the city council, the city manager, and especially Director Thomas Smith for taking a step forward to address Evanston's Crisis Intervention Services gap. As the city's Mental Health Board, we have been a part of this process to evaluate the best way to provide crisis intervention services for Evanston residents. Ms. Thomas Smith's presentation will accurately depict the gaps in services and the difficulties experienced by many Evanston residents. You will recall the Mental Health Board presented a proposal to address these needs in the area and the concerns of the staff. Recently, President's Behavioral Health has submitted a proposal to Director Smith, Thomas Smith, excuse me, that would provide an alternative to the Mental Health Board's proposal. In their proposal, President's Behavioral Health can utilize existing capacity and expand staff to address the mental health needs of Evanston residents. Since buying into this network of services is a more affordable option, Evanston Mental Health Board lends our full support for this proposal. We do, however, have two concerns regarding it. First, it is our understanding that if the city purchases these services from President's Behavioral Health, Evanston residents would have access to a 24-hour crisis hotline, referral and case management services outreach for individuals in crisis. We recommend that President's Behavioral Health revise their proposal to include quality metrics that would establish the effectiveness of these services, and this is similar to the way the Mental Health Board currently evaluates community purchase services from other agencies. And since the current proposal does not include any metrics, it will be difficult for us to determine after one year whether the needs of Evanston residents were met and whether city staff find the service is addressing their concerns. And secondly, since this is a purchased mental health service, albeit through general funds, we encourage the city council to consider having the Mental Health Board review the President's program and their metrics quarterly. The Mental Health Board already has a mechanism to do so and to evaluate such services and can work collaboratively with city staff and the council to determine the effectiveness of this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jamie Evans, 1028 Ashland, excuse me. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you, Dick, for the kind words. We are, along with my wife Debbie Evans, we are looking for... To open the brewery and restaurant on Howard Street, 623, 627 and a half Howard Street. We have been living in Evanston 17 years. Debbie was the chef, and I also worked at the... At Tommy Evans for about eight years. Then we opened the Celtic Knot in 2005 on Church Street, across from the main public library. We also have a wine and beer and sort of gourmet food store, retail store on Jarvis in Rogers Park. We opened that in 2007. Excuse me, 2007. We're no longer involved with the Celtic Knot, so we're looking for a new venture, and we're really excited. We think the spot on Howard is really ripe for an exciting... It's an... The market is there for this. And, you know, we've done a lot of research in the area, both sides of Howard, and we're really excited about the great success so far of Ward Eight in a similar kind of setup, so we just wanted to introduce ourselves and say thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Hi, India Mazalma-Kay, 1028 Ashland. I'll keep it quick, so as not to be redundant. Again, to introduce ourselves, I grew up in Evanston, went to Evanston Township, Nichols, Lincoln. I do see some familiar faces as well. My mom and dad are Jamie and Debbie, and I'm looking to be management at the brewery restaurant. Again, you know, see a need for the type of business, and with the success of Ward Eight, and, you know, we're all just really excited to be part of kind of the revitalization of this neighborhood, and there is definitely that market that's not downtown Evanston, but not in the city, you know, for somewhere to go. So just to make introductions, I guess, of who we are, and appreciate your time and listening. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Debbie Evans, Tom Fogarty, Rob. Rob, I don't know your last name. That sounds good. Would you stick around, please? You've been very helpful. And Jen Stiles.
Hi, my name is Debbie Evans, and I think I can recognize a lot of these faces sitting here. I've all been in the restaurant that I used to own, which was called the Celtic Knot Pub, and I really do hope you had a good experience, and if you didn't, I'd have left now, so I really don't care. Only joking, I do. I have a passion for food, and I have a passion for making things work. I'm really excited about Howard Street, and I cannot wait to get my hands dirty, literally, and hopefully everybody will be in support of it. I don't really want to bore your time, because everyone's said the same things that I'm going to say, but I really do hope everybody has a chance to come once it's open, which will probably be around about December, but hopefully sooner, we hope. And thank you very much for this opportunity to come in and talk to you all and say hi.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tom Fogarty, 1419 West Jarvis Avenue in Chicago, Illinois. Thank you for your time this evening. Introduce myself as the brewer and brewery manager of Peckish, here to say, not again, not to be redundant as we all gang the podium. This is a very exciting venture. My wife Jeanne and I have lived in the Rogers Park, Jarvis, Howard Street neighborhood for the past 16 years, will be 17 years in April, and, you know, we see this again as a very revitalization of this area, and we're excited to be a part of this, and I look forward to having you come by and trying some of my great craft brew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Rob Gorlick, 1017 Ridge Court, 28-year Evanston resident. I just came here to give my strong support to the brew pub that is being proposed to open up on Howard. I think it would... I can't say the word revitalization, because I've never really known Howard to be vitalized, but I think this would go to... This brew pub would go to lend a strong support in vitalizing Howard and improving the exposure of the current businesses that are on Howard as well. And I can just came here to attest to the character, the content and the character of Debbie and Jamie. They're just wonderful people, and they're an asset to Evanston, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jean Stiles. Thank you very much for your time. I am the happy spouse of Tom Fogarty, proposed brewmaster at the pub, and I can tell you he makes delicious and lovely things in a very conscientious way. I'm also an advanced sommelier, so I would be participating in the wine program for the restaurant. Ann Rainey and I have some dealings some years ago when our softball team in Rogers Park put a beating on the fourth ward of Evanston, and I just wanted to bring that up as part of, again, revitalizing the North Side. And so very gifted softball player, but in any event, it's good to see you again. Any other questions you have for us, I'm certainly happy to answer it, but Tom and I have lived in a house that we have renovated for 17 years, put a ton of energy into both the neighborhood, the people in the neighborhood, the organizations in the neighborhood, and I view this as a continuation of the same. So the time is probably right, certainly economically, we hope, for Howard Street to regain, rebuild, and be restored to the street that it once was. Many of us have memories of that street. I went to school at Northwestern, both undergrad and graduate, and I have a feeling that this street could become what it once was, so I hope that you also see our vision for that and will continue to support us in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I may need my expert on who the next speaker is. Mr. Risky, is it you? Your handwriting has gotten smaller, Junad.
I'm just going to make a brief comment on this, the Peckish issue. It's not that I have any issue with the people that are doing this, they're very nice people and all. The issue is procedure and process here. And as I said, and keep on saying, we don't have procedures and process in place to control financial issues at the city. And basically, what I saw there doesn't match up to anything that makes sense. And until you start to do these things, you're going to have more and more problems, and we'll discuss that. Actually, I'm going to talk on something else, but you'll have to understand that's the problem here. And there's been one other statement made up here, that no public funds were given away on these projects. On the Wine and Cheese Bar, there was a low... A grant given to the applicants of $100,000 that secured another loan, and that's a fact. The contract says that, okay? That's what's in there. So money's been given away. It's not just been loaned here, it's been given away. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Padma Rao, BK Rao, Junad Risky, and Dorothy Petradus.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman, my comments were approved by my attorney. Before your February 11th meeting, your seventh ward member tried to force me into conversation despite my prior requests to leave me alone. Both the First Amendment and Illinois Constitution guarantee our right to petition government for redress. The Illinois Constitution adds the right to make our opinions known to government. I submit that public comment is for taxpayers to exercise their constitutional rights, not for government to retort and force its whitewash. I submit that the exercise of constitutional rights does not require private persons to endure intimidation, harassment, or tantrums by public officials, whether in the public record or under color of being, quote, "talked to," end quote.
Mr. Rao, you're out of order when you talk about tantrums.
It is, I'm simply pointing out that the First Amendment does not require private persons to endure intimidation, harassment, or tantrums by public officials, whether in the public record...
There have not been any.
I didn't say there were. I'm saying simply that people do not have to put up with them. I'm saying they do not have to be endured. If you're admitting to having tantrums, that's on you. If you feel guilty for having done something, that's not my fault. I simply said that the exercise of constitutional rights does not require private persons to endure intimidation, harassment, or tantrums by public officials, whether in the public record or under color of being, quote, "talked to," end quote, outside public view. The public record clearly shows that we object to your closed-door dealings, especially in the Kendall matter. I submit that if you're too foolish to grasp our plain English, then no secret meeting can remedy such ignorance. I submit that your coercive attempts to corner us out of public sight raises concern that you intend to say...
Rao, you are out of order.
It raises concern that you intend to say or do something that you want to hide from the public, inferbly because it may be illegal. It's an inference. I submit that even an inactive lawyer should know that the criminal code states that intimidation is a class-three felony punishable by two to 10 years in prison. Stop violating the law and taxpayers' rights. Your eighth ward member recorded her animus against Viola in your video for AMPW on August 8, 2011, which Viola cited in...
Mr. Rao, you are out of order again.
It is in the public record. Go look it up, which Viola cited in its lawsuit against the city. Your lawyers hush-up cited no law and therefore lacks credibility. We object to your vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. The public record includes a letter from the Kendall developer's lawyer stating that Holland and Knight was hired to sue the city.
Rao, you are out of order again. We've been through this for two years.
You are out of order. Obey the Constitution. The Constitution of the state of Illinois says people are allowed to bring their opinions to the attention of their representatives.
In a respectful manner, and not when it is redundant.
It does not say that.
The law says you are not allowed to make redundant comments.
In fact, Judge Shader, in our own federal district, clearly stated in Vergara versus City of Waukegan...
Rao, please finish your comments.
...that a mayor cannot engage in content-based and speaker-based discrimination of the type that you engage in at every meeting.
You have three minutes.
Stop interrupting. We object... Because you interrupt. If you eat up time, that's your fault. Don't waste time, let me get through my comments. We object to your vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. The public record includes a letter from the Kendall developer's lawyer stating that Holland and Knight was hired to sue the city. The public record shows that Holland and Knight was paid tens of thousands of tax dollars to represent the city. Illinois Supreme Court rules of professional conduct forbid a law firm from representing against its current or former clients.
Rao, we have been through this, and you are out of order.
The public record states, as I have told you before, the First Amendment means we don't have to accept your whitewash and sham. The public record shows that your first ward son works for Holland and Knight. The Evanston Patch reported that your-
Turn it back on, you wasted the time.
You are not going to continue to malign people when all of these issues have been resolved.
I am stating what is in the public record and what has been reported by a newspaper. If you think the newspaper has committed some sort of malignment, take it up with the paper, but simply stating what has been reported and what is in your own public record is well within First Amendment rights, as you know. You cannot claim to be unaware of the First Amendment.
I am very aware of the rules for public comment and redundancy, we have been over this for two-plus years.
That is unconstitutional content-based discrimination. There is no time limitation imposed on how many times you bring to your public officials your opinion. Show me where in the Illinois Constitution it says any such thing. It states the people have the right to bring their opinion to their representatives. The First Amendment allows people to petition for redress. It does not put a limitation on how many times you bring your opinion to their representatives.
You do have a right in a respectful and civil manner to bring anything you wish.
That is simply content-based discrimination, nothing more and nothing less. You dislike the speaker and the speech and you engage in content-based discrimination. Turn the microphone back on and let me finish my comments pursuant to the First Amendment.
No, that is not going to happen.
You are interfering with First Amendment rights, you are engaged in speaker-based and content-based discrimination. How many times do you intend to trample on the Constitution? You claim out of order simply to attack someone you dislike.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Yes.
Point of order, if I may, I think, not only has the time elapsed, but I think our patience has elapsed, as has of the people who are here in the room listening for multiple times, so I would just invite everybody here who's interested in not hearing this from the audience, you are welcome to address the speaker as well.
You cannot ask a minority to disinfranchise the minority. That is equally illegal.
And Madam Mayor, I would reiterate my open invitation to talk with the speakers at any time.
Objection, you have no right to interfere in public comment, all democratic responses are forbidden. You cannot engage in harassment and intimidation as a basis for simply exercising a constitutional right. As I stated, there is no prerequisite for a closed-door meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move a recess.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Jean Stiles, thank you very much for your time. I am the happy spouse of Tom Fogarty, proposed brewmaster at the pub, and I can tell you he makes delicious and lovely things in a very conscientious way. I'm also an advanced sommelier, so I would be participating in the wine program for the restaurant. Ann Rainey and I have some dealings some years ago when our softball team in Rogers Park put a beating on the fourth ward of Evanston and I just wanted to bring that up as part of, again, revitalizing the North Side. And so very gifted softball player, but in any event, it's good to see you again. Any other questions you have for us, I'm certainly happy to answer it, but Tom and I have lived in a house that we have renovated for seventeen years, put a ton of energy into both the neighborhood, the people in the neighborhood, the organizations in the neighborhood, and I view this as a continuation of the same. So the time is probably right, certainly economically, we hope, for Howard Street to regain, rebuild, be restored to the street that it once was. Many of us have memories of that street. I went to school at Northwestern, both undergrad and graduate, and I have a feeling that this street could become what it once was, so I hope that you also see our vision for that and will continue to support us, and it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I may need my expert on who the next speaker is. Mr. Rizki, is it you? Your handwriting has gotten smaller, Junad.
I'm just going to make a brief comment on this, the Peckish issue. It's not that I have any issue with the people that are doing this, they're very nice people and all. The issue is procedure and process here. And as I said, and keep on saying, we don't have procedures and process in place to control financial issues at the city. And basically what I saw there doesn't match up to anything that makes sense. And until you start to do these things, you're going to have more and more problems and we'll discuss that, actually, I'm going to talk on something else, but you'll have to understand that's the problem here. And there's been one other statement made up here, that no public funds were given away on these projects. On the Wine and Cheese Bar, there was a low, a grant given to the applicants of $100,000 that secured another loan. And that's a fact, the contract says that, okay? That's what's in there. So money's been given away, it's not just been loaned here, it's been given away. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Padma Rao, BK Rao, Junad Rizki, and Dorothy Petraitis.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman, my comments were approved by my attorney. Before your February 11th meeting, your seventh ward member tried to force me into conversation despite my prior requests to leave me alone. Both the First Amendment and Illinois Constitution guarantee our right to petition government for redress. The Illinois Constitution adds the right to make our opinions known to government. I submit that public comment is for taxpayers to exercise their constitutional rights, not for government to retort and force its whitewash. I submit that the exercise of constitutional rights does not require private persons to endure intimidation, harassment, or tantrums by public officials, whether in the public record-
There have not been any.
I didn't say there were. I'm saying simply that people do not have to put up with them. I'm saying they do not have to be endured. If you're admitting to having tantrums, that's on you. If you feel guilty for having done something, that's not my fault. I simply said that the exercise of constitutional rights does not require private persons to endure intimidation, harassment, or tantrums by public officials, whether in the public record-
There have not been any.
I didn't say there were. I'm saying simply that people do not have to put up with them. I'm saying they do not have to be endured. If you're admitting to having tantrums, that's on you. If you feel guilty for having done something, that's not my fault. I simply said that the exercise of constitutional rights does not require private persons to endure intimidation, harassment, or tantrums by public officials, whether in the public record-
There have not been any.
I didn't say there were. I'm saying simply that people do not have to put up with them. I'm saying they do not have to be endured. If you're admitting to having tantrums, that's on you. If you feel guilty for having done something, that's not my fault. I simply said that the exercise of constitutional rights does not require private persons to endure intimidation, harassment, or tantrums by public officials, whether in the public record-
There have not been any.
...or under color of being, quote, "talked to," end quote, outside public view. The public record clearly shows that we object to your closed-door dealings, especially in the Kendall matter. I submit that if you're too foolish to grasp our plain English, then no secret meeting can remedy such ignorance. I submit that your coercive attempts to corner us out of public sight raises concern-
Rao, you are out of order.
...that you intend to say, it raises concern that you intend to say or do something that you want to hide from the public, inferbly because it may be illegal. It's an inference. I submit that even an inactive lawyer should know that the Criminal Code states that intimidation is a Class III felony punishable by two to 10 years in prison. Stop violating the law and taxpayers' rights. Your eighth ward member recorded her animus against Viola in your video for A&amp;PW on August 8, 2011-
Ms. Rao, you are out of order again.
...which Viola cited, it is in the public record, go look it up, which Viola cited in its lawsuit against the city. Your lawyers hush-up cited no law and therefore lacks credibility. We object to your vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. The public record includes a letter from the Kendall developer's lawyer stating that Holland and Knight was hired to sue the city. The public record shows that Holland and Knight was paid tens of thousands of tax dollars to represent the city. Illinois Supreme Court rules of professional conduct forbid a law firm from representing against its current or former clients.
Rao, we have been through this and you are out of order.
The public record states, as I have told you before, the First Amendment means we don't have to accept your whitewash and sham. The public record shows that your first ward son works for Holland and Knight. The Evanston Patch reported that your-
Turn it back on, you wasted the time.
You are not going to continue to malign people when all of these issues have been resolved.
I am not going to do that anymore. I am stating what is in the public record and what has been reported by a newspaper. If you think the newspaper has committed some sort of malignment, take it up with the paper, but simply stating what has been reported and what is in your own public record is well within First Amendment rights, as you know. You cannot claim to be unaware of the First Amendment.
I am very aware of the rules for public comment and redundancy, we have been over this for two-plus years.
That is unconstitutional content-based discrimination. There is no time limitation imposed on how many times you bring to your public officials your opinion. Show me where in the Illinois Constitution it says any such thing. It states the people have the right to bring their opinion to their representatives. The First Amendment allows people to petition for redress. It does not put a limitation on how many times you bring your opinion to their representatives.
You do have a right in a respectful and civil manner to bring anything you wish.
That is simply content-based discrimination, nothing more and nothing less. You dislike the speaker and the speech and you engage in content-based discrimination. Turn the microphone back on and let me finish my comments pursuant to the First Amendment.
No, that is not going to happen.
You are interfering with First Amendment rights, you are engaged in speaker-based and content-based discrimination. How many times do you intend to trample on the Constitution? You claim out of order simply to attack someone you dislike.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Point of order, if I may, I think, not only has the time elapsed, but I think our patience has elapsed, as has of the people who are here in the room listening for multiple times, so I would just invite everybody here who's interested in not hearing this from the audience, you are welcome to address the speaker as well.
You cannot ask a minority to disinfranchise the minority. That is equally illegal.
And Madam Mayor, I would reiterate my open invitation to talk with the speakers at any time.
Objection, you have no right to interfere in public comment, all democratic responses are forbidden. You cannot engage in harassment and intimidation as a basis for simply exercising a constitutional right. As I stated, there is no prerequisite for a closed-door meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move a recess.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1027.12]
Start again, everyone. BK Rao, it's your turn to speak. BK Rao, it's your turn to speak. BK Rao, it's your turn to speak. All right, Mr. Rizki? Oh, okay, good. Nobody is disenfranchising a minority. Ms. Rao, BK Rao, it's your turn to speak. Otherwise, Mr. Rizki, it's your turn. All right, Mr. Rizki, it's your turn. Here you go.
Do you want to speak?
No, I would like to finish the comments, but five to three minutes if they're uninterrupted. But as you probably know, the First Amendment does matter. You're allowed to state your opinions to your government without being attacked or harassed.
Would you like the mic from Mr. Rizki?
Do you want to continue?
Well, I would like to continue. But apparently, because I'm a minority, this government seems to feel that I don't have rights.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey.
I'm interested in knowing if any members of the council would be interested in suspending the rules and canceling citizen comment for the rest of the evening until after we've finished our business.
Second. Is there a motion? Mr. Rizki, do you want to speak, or do you want to wait till the end of the evening? Thank you. All in favor of Alderman Rainey's motion? Mr. Rizki, we want the mic returned. Yes, there are other people on the list. Dorothy Patratas, do you want to speak, or wait till the end of the evening?
So you're treating different people differently.
I'm treating everyone the same.
Whether they say what you want them to say or not, which is typical content-based discrimination.
Everyone has the option to speak now, in a respectful and civil manner, or to wait.
Civil being your opinion.
I'm chairing the meeting, that's correct. Ms. Patratas?
Which is forbidden, according to the Supreme Court of the United States.
There you go. Is it? Let's see if it works. All right. Matt, would you make sure the mic is on?
Okay, are we ready?
No, it's good, yes.
I'm sorry to be interrupting, because I really do believe that everyone has a right to their comments. My name is Dorothy Patratas. I'm a resident of Evanston, and I would like to address you regarding--
Madam Mayor, we have a citizen who's at the dais interrupting the other comments.
Ms. Rao, would you please go sit down? That's what I don't want to have happen.
Thanks for your patience, sorry.
Okay.
It could take a mere three minutes for each of us to get through our comments, but instead, the mayor has to turn it into a massive civil rights violation and waste a huge amount of time for everyone, because she can't stand to allow people to say their piece.
Excuse me, would you be willing for me to take my three minutes, and then you can continue?
Why don't I get to have my three minutes all in one batch, like you do? I'm not saying you don't have the right, you certainly do. But why is it okay for me to be discriminated against and interrupted and treated like a second-class citizen?
Ma'am, I really don't want anyone to discriminate against you, or me, or anyone else. But I've been here since about eight o'clock to make a three-minute statement, and I would like that opportunity. Well, I wish for you that there was some way for this to be resolved. I'm not the one who's going to resolve it for you.
It's not your responsibility, it's our government's.
So what do we do?
We could ask our government to follow the law.
We are.
You're not. Violating First Amendment rights is not following the law by any stretch of the imagination. Engaging in speaker-based and content-based discrimination is not following--
We will have civil citizen comment at Evanston City Council meetings.
What Jader said is consistent with the First Amendment. You use the word "civil," meaning only if someone agrees with you and says what you want them to say. That's all that it means in your mind and the way that you apply it. People have the right to criticize--
Excuse me, I'm going to step back.
Sorry. Thank you for trying. Marjorie Fujara, do you want to try?
Turn the mic back on and allow me to finish my comments.
Your comments are finished.
No, they're not. You interrupted, you argued, you made your own comments.
Good evening. My name is Marjorie Fujara of 343 Dewey. I'm a mom, I'm a pediatrician, and I'm a proud supporter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I'm here to give a few comments about the impact of gun violence in Evanston and beyond, because gun violence is a problem that belongs to all of us. I first would like to applaud Mayor Tisdale's blueprint for a multifaceted approach as detailed in the most recent issue of the Roundtable. In my work as a pediatrician at Stroger over the past decade, I've become increasingly alarmed by the number of children exposed to violence in their homes and in their neighborhoods. The vast majority of children that I see know someone very close to them that has been shot or killed. Some of them have witnessed this at close range, and it probably wouldn't surprise anyone in this room that these children are at increased risk for developing depression, anxiety, ADHD, and post-traumatic stress disorder, leading to poor school performance if untreated, and a host of other problems. What may surprise you to learn is that these children who live in violent neighborhoods are at a much greater risk of developing childhood obesity. A recent study by the Consortium for to Lower Obesity in Chicago's Children found that 70% of children between the ages of two and five in the Inglewood neighborhood of Chicago are obese. Seventy percent, seven-zero. Fifty percent of six-to-12-year-olds in Inglewood are also obese. When we compare this to a neighborhood like Norwood Park, which is a white, relatively affluent neighborhood with almost no gun violence, only 10% of those children are obese. It's been well-proven that access to safe, green spaces is closely correlated with a healthy body mass index. To be successful with this problem, we need to take action on behalf of our community, as well as communities beyond our borders. Every American child has a right to a safe neighborhood and a safe school, and it's time for the silent majority to speak up for reasonable gun laws. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, National PTA, and both teachers' unions in this country unanimously support universal background checks for gun purchases. This is actually favored by 90% of Americans, as well, by a recent Johns Hopkins poll. It's important to note that 40%, almost half of all guns purchased in this country, are done so without the benefit of a background check. The above groups that I mentioned, the AP, AMA, and teachers' groups, also support, as Mayor Tisdale has, a ban on assault weapons, or that are commonly euphemistically referred to as sporting rifles now, that are really designed for combat and have no role in our civilized society. In addition to that, the Moms That Demand Action call for limiting ammunition magazines to less than 10 rounds. I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and again, I thank the mayor for her plan for combating this on many levels.
Thank you. Next is Priscilla Giles.
I'm here again, speaking for the physically challenged people at Fleetwood Jordan who still do not have access. And I don't know, because I haven't been here for a while, thank you for taking your time, Dr. Rao. And I'd like to know if, I don't know, maybe you can tell me, or maybe you have to wait until the meeting is over to tell me whether or not Evanston is following Chicago and putting in the new meters that are not meters, that are one, I see somewhere near the library, that is going to be another challenge, not only for the physically challenged, but for everybody who drives a car and wants to park, especially for the people who don't bring a shovel with them to shovel from the street to the parking meter. Is there? That was the question, is that?
We are in the process of looking at proposals to replace all the meters in the city. We'll be coming back to the council probably sometime later in the spring with that. It'll be a mix of existing meters that you have now, but would have an opportunity to use credit card, and we would also be going to some of the aggregated parking meter areas like that you find in Chicago where it's--
Even though Chicago's complaining, everyone is complaining Evanston is going to do that, too?
I think people are mostly complaining that the city of Chicago sold their parking meters. We have no plans to sell our parking meters.
But I don't think you're going to take the meters, are you going to take the meters out and, or leave them there and decide whether you're going to keep them, or what's going to happen with those meters?
All the meters would come out, and some would be replaced--
So you're not going to put them back, are you?
Not the mechanical meters that are there now, no.
Another challenge, another challenge for everyone.
Thank you. Last is Karen Alderman-Burris.
I just wanted to add to Wally's comment, that parking and transportation this Wednesday, there's going to be an update on what's going on with the meters, so if anybody would like to attend that--
Yeah, we're in the final stage.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add that to it.
Thank you. Oh, okay, go ahead.
I want to speak with you tonight about gun safety. First off, I guess I'm really upset. I'm upset because I moved to Evanston in 2006, and one of the first things I learned about Evanston was about the shooting of a young man, which at that time was termed a "gun initiation." Now, I don't know if that was true or not, but that's what I heard. And the shooting at Sandy Hook has affected all of us. And when I think about Sandy Hook, I think, what if that happened here in Chicago? What if it happened on the south side, or the west side, or here in Evanston? We would all be greatly affected. Now, I moved here because I had an opportunity, for the first time in my life, to be a hands-on grandmother. My youngest grandchildren are four and seven years old. I do not want them to become victims of gun violence, because they're in the wrong place at the wrong time. And some of the shocking things, in preparation for speaking tonight, I went online and looked for information on shootings in Evanston, and that became a real blur to me. The dates, the names, all of these are people that someone cares for. It doesn't matter that they might be the ones carrying the guns. They have families, too, and that family suffers along with the family of the victim and the family of the shooter. I was very surprised to find that between June 2010 and January 2013, there were 190 shootings in Evanston. 190 shootings. That's amazing. There has to be an end to this. We can't-- You know, I am upset, not only for my grandchildren, who live in a safe neighborhood, but I'm concerned about all grandchildren. I'm concerned about what is happening to the young, and I'm concerned about what's happening to the elderly as well. There has to be an end to this. It can't merely be that we're upset by the 10:00 news, and it's gone. It's out of our mind. We've got to take some responsibility and do something, and I thank you, Mayor Tisdale, for siding with-- Mayor's against illegal guns, and for your support. I hope you continue that, and I hope that the council will take up this matter.
I do need you to wrap up, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I wish you will take this up. Yesterday would have been great, tomorrow would be okay, but promise me, it's going to be on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you for, I'm Corrine Ruzell, actually. I live at 708 Milburn. I'm a clinical psychologist in practice in Evanston, and I'm also a member of the Evanston Mental Health Board. So I appreciate just a moment to follow up on some comments that our vice chair, Kim, made earlier, and I understand we're going to hear a proposal tonight from Presence Behavioral Health, and I think it's wonderful that the city is addressing crisis mental health issues. I'm not sure exactly what Presence is going to say, but I would like to invite them to think about their role as a new entity in our community, how they're going to interface with existing services, existing agencies that address mental health issues in the city, and as well, and I think this follows, interestingly enough, the last two comments by people about youth violence. One of the forms of crisis that we do deal with in our community is violence, as well as other mental health issues related to young adult suicide, family violence, family strife, and I hope very much that they will address youth mental health crisis issues in particular. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rizki, did you want to comment or not?
Thank you. It was stated in three months that Wally and Mr. Stoneback are going to bring you a contract for wholesale water sales to the village of Lincolnwood. Again, I'm afraid we're going to have a very big financial repercussions here on the taxpayers. I am not against wholesale water sales, but given over 80% of the capacity of the water plant is sold to the village of Skokie and the Northwest Water Commission, and you are losing money, one has to wonder how unprofitable this will become. I am curious to understand how Mr. Stoneback plans to enlarge the water plant and make Skokie and the Northwest Water Commission pay their 80% share. It is not clear to me why Mr. Stoneback stated Evanston ratepayers would bear 100% of the plant expansion, when in the new scheme, they will use less than 10% of the plant's capacity. Before this council approves any new contract with Lincolnwood, the entire operation of the Water Department needs an outside audit, and I do stress an outside audit. The public in this council needs to understand the real profitability of the current system. We need to understand the revenues and the expenses assigned to each user to develop their hundred, I'm sorry, their 1,000-gallon unit cost for Skokie and the Northwest Water Commission and the Evanston ratepayers. I am at a loss how Mr. Stoneback plans to develop 1,000-gallon unit costs for Lincolnwood, since they would share the cost with the other current users, which it appears the city does not understand. I am really concerned, if we don't have anybody here capable of doing this, we need to either get a consultant or find somebody else to operate the system. At the last council meeting, I outlined the huge underfunding of the City of Evanston Water and its infrastructure, approaching over $300 million, and that really translates to a three-to-four times increase in water rates for the ratepayers here. And also, the issue of the fund transfer, $3 million to the general fund, and the fact that there's probably a lot of misuse of capital here in the 10% range. I am at a total loss with the current issues we have here, how the city plans to add over $700 million to the capital program, when it cannot even run its current capital program, and the city has a goal to fix its capital planning. I'm not sure this is an enterprise fund, but something different. When Mr. Stoneback suggested that basically he could take money from his new revenue and just transfer it to the general fund, I think that's what we're looking at here, a way to get more money into the general fund, rather than to run a sound fiscal operation. Unfortunately, given the lack of fiscal controls here, this is going, could be a very bad situation for the ratepayers, and could escalate into really a possible bankruptcy situation. I hope the council members understand what I'm saying, and make Mr. Bob Kowitz accountable, and give us the real cost and the real expenses for all current users of this system before any new contracts are signed here. You know, just don't get these starry-eyed views, we're going to make money. You need to start acting really responsible, because we talk about the violence and all these problems in this community. Well, if you're going to raise water bills three or four times on people, the poor can't possibly survive. With $200 water bills now, there'll be $500, $600 water bills for every two months. So if you're so concerned, you better act in a fiscally responsible manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Mr. Rizki raised many, many concerns. I think it's important to point out, however, that we are not operating our water operation at a loss. I think the question of what the profits to the city will be over time, not only with new customers, but current customers, is a key question. But I don't want anyone to leave here thinking we are operating at a loss. We are not operating at a loss. We have spent a few hours just at Christmas time with Mr. Rizki, talking about the water fund, offer to meet with you again, and discuss that as long as you'd like, and certainly before this council is presenting any contracts with any additional customers, all of those issues that Mr. Rizki raised will be discussed.
Thank you, City Manager. BK Rao, it's my last offer. Did you want to speak now or not? Okay.
My comments were approved by my attorney. My First Amendment gives-- the First Amendment gives taxpayers the right to bring grievances to public officials, and a citizen comment is designed with these taxpayer rights in mind. For your information, First Amendment rights do not have any expiration date. Dr. Margal Luther King had to ask for equal justice for a very, very long time before it happened. Now, I exercise my constitutional right to speak about your candle vote. It was passed by this council without any public discussion. According to the Evanston patch, your votes appear to have been already obtained beforehand. Most disturbing, your candle vote involves killing over 24 trees and a dangerous alley. As if all this wasn't enough, there is extra baggage in the form of conflicts of interest. The double representation by Holland and Knight was never questioned by this council, even though it was brought to their attention. I submit that one can infer that this is because the first ward person's son works for Holland and Knight.
Ms. Rao, that's out of order, we've been over that.
Leave her alone, she's just stating her opinion, leave her alone.
Is that a fact or not? Doesn't the first ward person's son work for Holland and Knight? That's what I stated here. So don't argue with me and eat up my time, please. Your tarnished image doesn't stop there. The eighth ward person burdens taxpayers with wasteful spending, like her wine-and-cheese bar. Her attacks against Viola and her mistreatment of Ms. Davies were cited in their lawsuits against the city.
You are out of order again, we've been over this.
Leave her alone, it is in the public record.
It is in the public record. Everything I take from here is public record and facts, so please don't waste your time and my time arguing. Listen. Her attacks against Viola and her mistreatment of Ms. Davies were cited in their lawsuits against the city. These are facts that I found in the public record. I submit that taxpayers may be forced to pay for more costly and unnecessary litigation, resulting from such reckless words and deeds. We have a mayor who apparently does not want to let the truth come out. She tries to silence citizens with her interruptions and arguments, and by turning off the microphone. I submit that such childish nonsense doesn't work. Let taxpayers speak, so we can all hear the truth. Save the candle trees, so we can all breathe better. Breathing is necessary to survive. And I shall return.
That concludes public comment. City Manager, do you have special orders of business?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two this evening. First is an update on our discussions regarding mental health service case management. Have you recalled at the budget deliberations last fall, we proposed to you some funding for additional mental health case management services? The council asked that we work with the Mental Health Board and develop some alternatives. We're here this evening with a proposal and a recommendation that I be authorized to negotiate and sign an agreement with Presence Behavioral Health in the amount of $55,000. Ivana Thomas-Smith, the health director is here with a brief presentation.
Good evening again, City Council--
Good evening again, City Council Members. Mayor Tisdale, City Clerk Green, and City Manager Bob Kowitz. I would first like to, again, Ivanda Thomas Smith, Director of Evanston Health Department. I would also like to thank the Mental Health Board, city staff, and the members of Presence Health who are present here this evening for their contributions to the compilation of this document that I'm going to share with you tonight. And also, they'll be available for questions if you have about the proposal. So I really want to just quickly give you an overview of why we're here, and why it's so important for us to address services and crisis that are efficient and effective for residents in Evanston. So this is going to be a community-wide response. So just an overview, city staff really seeks, we sought an opportunity to make sure that we were avoiding duplication of services, consolidation of services as it was appropriate. We wanted to be intentional about addressing gaps that are identified and have existed for a number of years between what residents require and what staff can offer and provide. And tonight, this evening, our goal is to get a solution to address this crisis intervention. And when we mention crisis intervention in the proposal, we're really referring to outreach and case management for those families that are in crisis. And just to give you background information, for the last two years, actually, city staff from various departments, Health Department, Police, Fire, Community and Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, and Community Services, really attempted to identify internal services that we can provide, and as well as external services to address this crisis. We addressed resources externally such as Trilogy, Connections for the Homeless, Evanston Skokie Valley Senior Services, Evanston Township, and just many stakeholders who have contributed to mental health services in the Evanston community. We met with members of the Mental Health Board to seek assistance, and some of the solutions will be presented tonight. So just to give you an idea of what are these concerns, there's a description of the concerns that kind of are identified as outliers. Outliers are those kind of unique frequent calls, unique situations, unique to our social service, mental health service providers in Evanston. Some of those unique issues I'm going to talk to you about tonight, and I'm not going to give you an exhaustive list. I'm just going to give you a snapshot of some of the calls and situations that staff have been presented with to address. Some of them relate to mental health issues by individuals and families. Some of them relate to hoarding issues, disabled residents, residents who are refusing services but need services, and some situations for emergency assistance. So let me give you an idea of some of these calls that staff are challenged with. We've had about sixty inappropriate transfers conducted by our Police and Fire Department, and these sixty inappropriate transfers typically happen in one quarter. We have frequent and fraudulent police reports, and it's an estimate of about ten calls per year that fit into that category. Unfortunately, we have residents that have reported items stolen out of their homes, sexual assault, and inappropriate hospitalizations to find out through investigation that either the identified assailant is not living, or the identified assailant is not anyone known to anyone in the community as well as the caller that we're getting. And sometimes, we can spend two to three days doing that kind of investigation and that kind of triage. Residents call the police sometimes as few at, some same residents, we call frequent callers, may call the police department anywhere between three and ten times a week. Same residents can call the Fire Department for inappropriate transfers, and unfortunately, because of our delay in state funding and our situation and decrease in mental health beds, sometimes these residents are released from the emergency rooms prior to the rig even leaving the premises. So this is just not an effective way to triage or treat anyone with mental health illnesses that have called for a transport, knowing that in 911 cases, we cannot deny transportation. Sometimes, we get calls from seniors that are not quote-unquote seniors, they're not old enough to meet the criteria for additional senior services, but they've aged out of case management services that may exist in our boundaries. Sometimes, in emergency cases, there's a need for utility assistance. So again, these concerns that have arisen and bubbled up in the community have significantly increased over the last two years, and at this point, it is time to provide some type of crisis intervention. So again, these are these outlying kind of situations that have occurred. So what progress has been made already? City Manager Bob Kowitz did meet with the Mental Health Board, I think, on two occasions to ask for guidance from their level of expertise. City staff, again, have met internally and externally with stakeholders. And again, the cause for such a crisis typically, we've found, has been related to a funding, absence of funding, delay in funding, and this absence and delay of state funding has sometimes required entities to close their doors and move outside of our boundaries, and are not, no longer available for our residents, and a significant statewide decrease in mental health services. City staff must define the level of service required, an example stated above, in order to provide the appropriate response to these service requests. With the potential of increased services, a recommendation to add staff or contract out for case management services to support the mentally ill, or disabled, or other concerns that are considered outliers on a long-term basis, with resources to assist with housing, utilities, mental health treatment, will need to be determined. So our timeline was initially, internally, staff met about three different times over a two-year period. The Mental Health Board has since presented a proposal to City Council. The city manager placed eighty-five thousand in the general fund budget to kind of address futuristically how we would look at addressing the crisis intervention. And then tonight, I would like to present the Presence Health proposal. So the mental health proposal, the review of it was members of the actual board reached out to other municipalities that looked like Evanston and provided similar-like services. This attempt was made by phone calling, actually talking to entities that provided the services, and actually sometimes, in some cases, visiting the site. So this, I'm going to share with you, is just a snapshot of what other municipalities provide similar-like services. So at Displanes, the services are located in the Health and Human Services Department. As you can see, there's a listing of staff and what they primarily provide are referrals back and forth to the Police and Fire Department and Building Department to assure that residents' issues have been addressed, and they capture those numbers on an annual basis. Staff make home visits, but ten percent of their service calls are from Police and Fire, and forty percent are typically from their senior service calls through their triage system. And that's what Displanes is doing to address what we're trying to talk about tonight. At Niles, there's a staff of four, six, I'm sorry, four full-time employees, six part-time licensed social workers. Fifty percent, I'm sorry, I'll go forward. Fifty percent of the staff time is devoted primarily to senior services. They do have a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week coverage, and their budget is about eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and some of the monies are reimbursed through Medicare. When we look to our peers in Oak Park, Oak Park actually contracts all of their mental health services to a full-service mental health agency called Thrive, which is actually located blocks away from Oak Park Department of Public Health. And so they have councils that work twelve shifts and off-shifts, and they typically respond directly from the ER calls related to youth calls, domestic disputes, or public disturbances, or reports of people unable to take care of themselves in uninhabitable dwellings. Again, most of their referrals come from the emergency rooms. And senior citizens are requested and handled primarily by their township, and their budget annually is about a hundred and ten thousand. When we look to Wheeling, they have a complement of staff that work out of their senior center. They have three staff that rotate on call twenty-four-seven. They primarily consult with Police and Fire, and their budget is about six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. So after this assessment, and after this pooling of information, the Mental Health Board made a unanimous recommendation that the city should look at expanding a central response, regular contact with the Fire and Police Department, perform follow-up services to citizens of Evanston, referrals to agencies, et cetera, and also consider providing twenty-four-hour coverage for weekends. The budget at the time the Mental Health proposed was a budget, as you can see, of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand. And again, Mental Health Board members have made comments tonight that support the next proposal that I'm going to give to you. So you've seen this document before, that's why I went kind of quickly, because this was the initial proposal that the Mental Health Board came up with for the city to be responsive to this issue. But I want to tell you a little bit about the new proposal that we're talking about tonight, and I want to give you some background about Presence Behavioral Health. Presence Behavioral Health is formerly Resurrection Behavioral Health, and it operated a network of community and clinic-based behavioral services in both urban and suburban Chicago. As specialists in preventative and community mental health interventions, Presence Behavioral Health has provided a safety net, a crisis intervention program to local communities for over forty years, and has nurtured strong relationships with Illinois Department of Mental Health, local mental health boards such as ours, and other governmental bodies. They are accredited by the Joint Commission to do so. The Comprehensive Mental Health Center is located at St. Francis Hospital in Evanston, but they're operated by Presence Behavioral Health, and have been serving the Evanston community since nineteen seventy-two. Although they're located in St. Francis Hospital, or now Presence Health Hospital, the Mental Health Center is not a department of the hospital, but merely occupies space as a tenant in the hospital. Clinical and financial operations are overseen by Presence Behavioral Health, which is in turn reports to its own Board of Directors, and not to the St. Francis Hospital. Both Presence Behavioral Health and St. Francis Hospital are owned by the parent company, Presence Health. So an affiliation with a large Presence Health network allows Presence Behavioral Health to benefit from a measure of financial stability that is not always attained by community-based service providers. As standalone social service providers struggle to survive in a context of shrieking government, and government supporting financial stability of a parent company allows Presence Behavioral Health to assure the delivery of services to the community without interruption, and to offer a just wage and benefit package to its employees. So as you can see, Presence Behavioral Health is suggesting that they have an opportunity to expand their current services and provide outreach case management and community support to educate and train our Police and Fire regarding their services, and they have the capacity to expand their current crisis line to Evanston residents twenty-four-seven. They have the ability to provide home visitations to those identified chronic 911 callers, and to initiate psychiatric and home assessments, therapy, and counseling. Their proposed budget for 2013 would be fifty-five thousand dollars, and as you can see, the expenses are listed. The Crisis and Community Support Program is an expansion of their existing programs operated out of Presence Behavioral Health. The program-proposed budget is like the clinical model. The clinical model features efficiencies built on economies of scale and drawing upon an already-existing infrastructure that will now be expanded to cover residents of the citizens of Evanston. And they will do this on an intentional basis. They will begin to outreach and market, particularly to Evanston residents, to assure that they are knowledgeable about their capacity to serve us. Social workers' expense reflects salary and benefits provided by Presence include health insurance and benefits for a licensed clinical social worker. So what are our next steps? I would encourage you at this time to select and approve a proposal that addresses the gaps in current services for our at-risk individuals and families. And at this time, I will yield the floor and allow you to ask questions to the Vice President, Frank Parham, and his Director of Community Mental Health Crisis Services, and the Mental Health Board members that are still here, if you have specific questions about either proposal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Thomas Smith. I almost think that the proposal that's before us tonight is really not enough. It's pretty clear that there is need in the community, that providing these kind of interventional crisis management services is our ounce of prevention against a later pound of cure. And you can't deny the extraordinary expenses that the city incurs, both in the way of personnel and budget, to address the chronic callers. I don't know a better term to describe the folks who are really using our resources in an out-of-proportion way for their perceived need, but maybe not an actual need. But there's some need there that's not being addressed, and I got to believe that this won't be a one-year commitment for these kinds of services. My questions are, how are we going to connect with those residents who need the services? How are we going to make sure that they are getting the in-home visits that they need, that we've identified the ones who really are our most chronic callers with this need? And how are we going to help them? And how do we know that this has succeeded? Is it a handful of folks who are no longer calling, that they have other resources besides 911? So...
That's a great question. I think I'll ask Mr. Parham to come forward.
There's a lot of questions there, Director. I'm sorry.
To let you know how it works in other municipalities, and how they do get that connection, and how those frequent callers are known to them, and how they manage that. If you can come forward.
Thank you, because as I started thinking about the need for extension of the crisis line, it occurs to me that's how folks come to us. That's maybe the first knee-jerk response is, instead of calling 911, they call a known crisis line. So then the question is, how do we educate residents about the existence of this twenty-four-seven crisis line?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Grover, for, first of all, thank you to all the Aldermen and to Madam Mayor and City Clerk for having us this evening. In answer to your question, as Ms. Thomas has already said, we already have an existing network of crisis services. You saw the reference to Oak Park and Thrive. Thrive actually subcontract to us because of our existing network, so we're able to do this, and we want to extend it to the City of Evanston, basically at cost and on a trial basis, because our Mental Health Center, in response to what the doctor asked earlier, actually has been in this community for forty-one years in the same place. We're the designated Mental Health Center for this community, so we owe it to the City of Evanston to do something for the severe and persistently mentally ill in this community. Somehow, over the years, particularly in the last twenty years, we've lost our alliance with the Mental Health Board, we've lost our alliance with this august body, but we still, as part of our mission, are rooted in this community. And so what we would like to do is put at least some very basic twenty-four-hour services available by expanding our network for very minimal cost, and see if you like it. And if indeed it looks like more is needed, we will do more. We have twenty people on our crisis team, supervising physician, we have people stationed in ten police stations co-locating with the police, we have people in three emergency rooms co-locating with the emergency staff. What we really would like to do here is, it really is a threefold benefit. One of them is that we have people coming, using, actually abusing, the 911 system because they are lonely, isolated. People with severe and persistent mental illness have very little social contact, they call 911, they know they'll be taken to an ED. In the ED, they'll be given a sandwich, a nurse will talk to them, they'll have some contact, someone to take care of them for a short time. That reinforces the quest for those for that contact, and they call 911 again a couple of days later. We think this could potentially relieve some of the abuse of 911. The second benefit is that it will relieve congestion in the emergency department, because if people are arriving in the emergency department who are not in emergent need for psychiatric services or admission, then the people waiting in the emergency department to have a broken bone set, or to have a chipped tooth looked at, are waiting longer because resources are being diverted to a non-emergent need. Thirdly, some of the services for Medicaid recipients we can bill for, and the State of Illinois receives a federal fund match of fifty cents on the dollar for every Medicaid dollar we bill, so it potentially brings additional revenue into the State of Illinois at a time that we desperately need that revenue. So basically, how we tend to, to actually get to the meat of your question, how we want to do this is to use some of the funds to saturate the market and the community with an awareness of this twenty-four-hour crisis line. So we'll go to laundromats, we'll go to primary care offices, to FQHCs, to shelters, to other, the other partners that we've worked with at Evanston. You have ICFs here, Greenwood Care and another one. We've worked with those folks. We worked with Trilogy, we've worked with the homeless shelter here, we worked with Thresholds. So we... So we are known to some degree in the community. We just have not partnered well in the last fifteen to twenty years with Evanston particularly. But we've got these services and we want to make them available. So we will saturate the community with an awareness, cards, brochures, some of these funds will go to pay for all of that, phone calls. And then someone else from the Mental Health Board brought up the question of metrics. We certainly, that's a very reasonable thing to ask for. We will need some baseline data to know what constitutes an improvement, but we intend to raise awareness first, ask the... We were actually approached by the Evanston Fire Department and paramedics a couple of years ago for this, and we intended to share our printed materials so that each time paramedics show up at a home where they think the call may have been non-emergent or psychiatrically necessary, there'd be a card or a refrigerator magnet for that home. Once we identify who we affectionately call the frequent flyers, we will send our caseworker to their home. At very least, to make phone calls once, twice, or three times a week depending on the level of need and chronicity, then we will go to their home to try and change behavior patterns from picking up the call, the phone and calling nine-one-one to picking up the phone and calling six-eight-one HELP, which is our psychiatric crisis line. And once people begin to get reinforced by home visits, by having someone to talk to them potentially for a long time on the phone, they may find that more gratifying than using nine-one-one and showing up at the emergency room. So that's our hope, is that we'll eventually affect change with that behavior. A fourth benefit I think we would have is that both Mr. Quemer and the clinician we've identified for this are residents of Evanston. So we prefer to have residents of Evanston picking up these hours and getting the jobs as opposed to people from outside.
All right, great. I think I actually was on the Mental Health Board when we phased out funding to the St. Francis outpatient. Mental Health Clinic.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, at some point. Glad to have you, I hope, back partnering with us.
Great, it's good to be here.
Are you done, Alderman Grover? Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Thomas Smith, for the wonderful presentation. I guess I had a couple of quick questions, and thank you so much for your explanation because the first question was going to be, I was going to ask you for just a thirty-day battle plan, and I was going to ask for a comparison between Oak Park, and you laid that out very well. We have Erie Clinic coming to Evanston, and they're looking to expand their services. And I think, from what I read, that we're going to have a component of mental health services as a part of Erie. So my question is, given the expansion of Erie, how will you either compete or complement the services of Erie?
I'm in Braithwaite, if you will, I'd like to answer that. Erie will have a behavioral health component, but it will not be a twenty-four-hour crisis intervention.
Okay.
I think what he, they're proposing is the addition of the crisis intervention, so Erie would be a service provider that they may link residents to for further care.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
That does, that does. And so a quick little follow-up question, I think you've addressed it. So I'm having a little bit of connection issues with the 20K, that crisis hotline. So is that just staffing someone for that twenty-four-hour period, or is it paying for the services to staff it? Can you explain that to me?
It's additional staffing for the twenty-four-hour service and then also the marketing penetration to get, buy materials, get people out on the streets making this known. See, the issue is that we've already got this crisis line in place, but it's being paid for by property tax dollars from people in Brookfield, in Melrose Park, in Northlake. They don't want to necess... We can't ethically expand the service over here if there's not a buy-in from this local community. Those are, because those are tax dollars from our other mental health boards. So that's basically what we would be using the $20,000 for.
Okay.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Could you just expand a little bit on the lost connection with the Mental Health Board? You mentioned the metrics. Is that a problem? Is that something that you could work with the Mental Health Board to resolve that?
Yes, as I mentioned, that's a very reasonable request. One can almost get no grants today that don't require some kind of metrics, and we'd be happy to provide those and to share them with the Mental Health Board.
Well, I guess I'm more concerned about the working with is what I'm, you know, how do you see that playing out?
Well, what I think historically has happened is here in Illinois, seven oh eight Mental Health Boards were basically founded to support the basic community mental health provider in the community.
Right.
In our community here in Evanston, there has been an infelicitous divorce between the Mental Health Board and the Community Mental Health Center. I think that that was occasioned by our Community Mental Health Center having been bought by a healthcare corporation. Even though it's a not-for-profit healthcare corporation, I think there was a sense that the Mental Health Board had a preference for funding very grassroots, mom-and-pop social service organizations and did not feel that a clinic affiliated with a large parent company should be a beneficiary of local dollars. And we kind of made our peace with that fifteen or twenty years ago when Harvey Saver was running the Mental Health Board. And I had approached him at that time for funding, and he kind of indicated to me this was the philosophy. It was not looked at as favorable right now. But when we saw that our city needs these services and that we're providing it in fifteen other towns for a very reasonable cost, we thought we should at least come and offer it to the city rather than have you invent the, reinvent the wheel when we've already got it going, and we live here.
If I may, Alderman Holmes, I think it was... Tell me your name, sir, I'm sorry.
Frank Param.
Frank Param. I think it was that the board policy changed to not fund those things for which the Mental Health Board funding was a very small percentage of total budget for the programs. That was one criteria, and the other may have been that we were not looking to fund nominally. So we'd stopped doing the small grant amounts. That was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mental Health Board members, for serving.
And I have a second question, and I guess this one would go to Director Thomas Smith. In terms of the gaps in service...
Yes.
Particularly in the emergency assistance services, just recently, I've just had cases where I was surprised to learn some things that we just didn't do anymore, like for instance, when there's a fire and people are being, you know, displaced. I guess we give them one night at a hotel. I thought it was three or something, and so we had to go through a lot of issues in trying to get a second night while they could, you know. So is that going to be, it's just like that, will be addressed as well?
Not through this proposal.
Not through this?
But Director Griffin and I have had conversations about that issue, emergency assistance. In the past, what would happen is if there were a fire or interruption of service, there would be some city assistance for families in crisis for overnight stay. And what changed was Red Cross stepped in and said for emergency situations such as what we've just talked about, they would provide services for the first three days, and then the city would pick up. And by that time, typically what would happen is families would find other means of coverage, whether they would stay with found family members or, and sometimes their preference was not to stay at our contracted hotels. So what we found over the years is that it was a diminishing need and a diminishing request, and so those dollar amounts diminished as well in that response. So it was a supply and demand. When Red Cross would step in and provide some assurance for those families, by the time we approached them, they had already had a plan in place. So sometimes the staff would just help them coordinate that plan.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Alderman Holmes?
That answers my question, but I just, I, we've got to do something because something happens.
Sure.
I mean, we get, I get a call...
Sure.
In my, you know, in my warp, and somebody calling saying that, you know, these people haven't placed a go, it's a fire.
Right.
That kind of thing, and then I tried to, in fact, I called it Alderman Rainey because I was saying, I thought we did three nights. You know, we just found out that we don't, so I'm concerned about that.
You're correct. We used to, and then we have addressed it by individual case-by-case situation to respond to it.
Alderman Rainey, go ahead.
I was just wondering if Alderman Holmes did not have access to the Red Cross?
They, well, I mean, if you get, they had two nights from the Red Cross. That's all they had. They had two nights from the Red Cross, and they had one night from, and I was really surprised that it came from the police department. That was another piece that I didn't know. Actually, the other night came from the police department, and then we negotiated and got a second night from the police department until they could find a place. This is somebody with small kids and...
Right.
So, I mean, I don't want to go to an individual case, but I'm just simply saying that that is a gap in service that we have in this community, and we need to, we need to address it.
I agree. We've addressed, we've talked about it, and again, it's by case-by-case, individual basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the Mental Health Board for all of the work that they do. Some of you may know it was brought home to me this summer when I was actually called in to help work on an animal hoarding case here in Evanston. That was serious. It was a person who, for all appearances, seemed to be fully functional, but clearly was not. It would be someone who would be in the gap, who would never know when it would ever call because on the outside she looked absolutely fine. Inside, it was one of the most horrific things I've ever seen. Can tell you all about that some other time, but I never, ever, ever want to see something like that. Was fortunate enough to work with Alderman Wilson, with the police department, with the city manager, with the building department, with some outside resources that actually came in and helped with the animals. And we got it resolved, but in the process, and I was day-to-day involved with this, it was clear that there were terrible gaps in the city to deal with somebody in that situation. And while everyone was working as hard as they could, we didn't have anyone to help. And I talked with the city manager about this, and I said, you know, I may not have ever realized this before, but I understand that we need to do something for these people who are not clearly identifiable but where there is clearly a mental illness problem. And hoarding is a good example of that. May not be newspapers, may be animals, may be something else, but it's a mental health issue. So I have a very new respect for the Mental Health Board. I had respect for them before, but the problems that we have in these areas with people who are not identifiable as mentally ill but who obviously are, the Mental Health Board knows Evanston. They know our population. I mean, thank goodness for the building department because they were the early responder. So I clearly saw how important it is to have all of these agencies, all of the people, all of the staff working together. Didn't work perfectly, and it was clear to me that we need some more people to help in this area. So I, again, thanks to everybody who's put so much time into this, and I'm a true believer now.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Never mind.
All right. Alderman Braithwaite?
Just two quick follow-up questions. It shows here that you're seeking funding from the township, correct? If I'm looking at the proposed budget...
For, are you referring to the Presence Health Behavioral Budget?
I'm looking at the proposed budget on, what page is that? Page twenty?
Page?
Page twenty.
Twenty.
Am I in the right place?
Maybe. Are you referring to this budget?
I was referring to the, I can get straight to the question, but that's what I was looking at. My question is, is just in terms of service gaps that Alderman Holmes was touching on, and I appreciate Alderman Fisk's stories because I think we all have our own personal stories and connections with a variety of residents. So typically for the second ward, over fifty percent of the residents there that are black, my concern always just in terms of outreach and delivering services. So I would just like to understand specifically what type of experience you have working with low-income communities, and will your staff reflect the community that you work in?
Because we are a network of community mental health centers, we are established to work with lower-income uninsured and Medicaid recipients primarily. So that's where the bulk of our experience lies. So we serve people basically on a no-decline basis. In terms of reflecting the diversity of the community in which we're located, we make every effort to do that. Recruitment isn't always easy. We don't get always the candidates that we would like looking for positions with us, but we certainly make that a priority. It's the most effective way to work in a community, anyway.
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, we'd ask then you consider the action of SP one, that the council authorize city manager to negotiate and sign an agreement with Presence Behavioral Health, the amount of $55,000.
It's been moved and seconded. I guess that's money. So City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, motion passes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, SP two is a review of the revisions to the Economic Development Plan for 2013. This plan has been reviewed and recommended for your consideration previously by the Economic Development Committee. In the interest of time, I'd like to just give a brief overview, we don't need to even go through the PowerPoint that we prepared. But let me just bring your attention, starting on page twenty-seven of the packet. What we've tried to do is we've tried to streamline the areas of focus a little bit in the coming year, and really one of the biggest changes is this whole concept of quality of place. Many of you have served on the Economic Development Committee and have already heard our discussion on this point, but really it's about what makes Evanston Evanston. And I think that we've tried in the past year to focus on those efforts, and I think what we've learned in the past year is the need for even more focus on that is probably one of our greatest selling points, and as you can see on page twenty-seven, details some of those areas. On page twenty-eight, entrepreneurial development and growth-oriented startups, again, this is very similar to the work that we have been doing. Arts and entertainment, as you're all well aware, lots happening there, and we continue to focus there. One section we did not have specifically called out in the plan last year, which during the course of the year we've determined was very important, is our focus on retail. We're fortunate to have restaurants and other places to have a drink and to have a good time, but really that ability for people to come and purchase retail goods remains a very key element of our whole overall economic development plan. So we're proposing here on page thirty to, you know, call that out as a more specific focus area. And then finally, we've added an area on page thirty-two dealing with workforce development. And actually, of all of these points, that's probably the one that the Economic Development Committee spent the most time talking about. And what we've done through that discussion is really reworked this to be workforce development partnerships. The object of workforce development is not solely the city of Evanston's, but really we are a partner with many other non-for-profit, school, other government agencies around the area, and really the importance of focusing on partnerships, working to employ our residents of all ages in good, high-paid jobs. So those are the changes that we're proposing. Again, the Economic Development Committee at its last meeting spent quite a bit of time talking about this. In the interest of your time this evening, I'll just leave it at that, and be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Fisk?
I just want to say something really quickly. I've mentioned this to the city manager and to some staff before. When I first came on the council, I was a little bit concerned about our economic development plan in terms of where the staff was going. This is a very mature plan. This, to me, says that our staff really understands Evanston in depth, and for that, I'm very, very grateful, and I know that took an incredible amount of work, and that there's no other way to learn this other than by going out in the community and talking to people and getting to, getting to know how the community operates. And I'm very, very thankful for it. So I heartily endorse this, and again, I mean, you all look tired, but you've worked really, really hard, and this plan reflects that, so congratulations. I couldn't be more pleased.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right.
Otherwise, we'd ask Madam Mayor that the council consider adoption of the plan for 2013.
It's been moved and seconded.
Alderman Rainey?
That's what I wanted to say.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Oh, all right. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Economic Development Work Plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The Economic Development Work Plan is approved. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent, does that conclude?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, Madam Mayor, the consent agenda includes the following. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting for February 11. Administration Public Works Committee met this evening, and we request your approval of the payroll through February 10, $2,660,167.75. The bills through February 26, the amount of $2,303, $2,303,695.3. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute a one-year contract for the purchase of granular materials with G and M Trucking in the amount of $34,747.50. This includes things like crushed limestone, washed stone, and sand. We ask your approval for the second optional year of the original two-year contract with three optional years with Garter Armored Car Services for a not-too-exceed amount of $75,000 effective December 1, 2012 through November 30, 2013. The council appro, council's approval is requested for a one-year bid award. Oops, this is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, the council is asked to approve a one-year contract extension for the purchase of 350 cubic yards of concrete, that costed $97 per cubic yard, 200 cubic yards of high early-strength concrete at a cost of $118 per cubic yard, and 50 cubic yards of flowable fill at a cost of $86 per cubic yard to Ozinga Ready Mix in Chicago for a total of $64,000. Please approve allocating $10,000 to the Evanston Fourth of July Association for the celebration in 2013. This one-time contribution is in honor of the sesquicentennial, sesquicentennial birthday of the city of Evanston, and will go, be used towards a variety of musical acts. We ask your approval to renew the annual sole source maintenance and support agreement for the term March 1 through February 28, 2014 with Oracle Corporation for the city's Enterprise One software in the amount of $136,717.32. This is a decrease of $12,657.40 off the original 2013 renewal price. We ask that you authorize the City Manager to execute change order number three in the amount of $6,250 and grant a time extension of 60 calendar days to the agreement with C.D. Smith, Inc. for the Water Utility SCADA System Phase III. We ask your approval also of Resolution 12 R13, authorizing the City Manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning CMAP to seek staff and consulting services to update the city's bike plan. Funding up to $100,000 is provided by CMAP. The committee requests your approval of Resolution 13 R13, authorizing the use of motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $1,400,000 for street resurfacing and $132,727 for design and construction engineering services. For introduction this, this evening, we ask that you introduce ordinance 9013, authorizing the manager to negotiate and execute a commercial lease with an option to purchase for city-owned real estate, real property located at 623, 627 and 1/2 Howard Street. For introduction also is ordinance 23013, which recommends that the city council, we recommend that the city council adopt this ordinance, which amends Title 10 Motor Vehicle and Traffic Restricting Parking on the south side of Harrison from Green Bay Road west to the first north alley south, to the first north-south alley, sorry. For introduction also, we recommend that the council introduce ordinance and then approve ordinance 24013, amending Title 10 Motor Vehicle and Traffic, adding residence-only parking District 6 on Harrison Street and Eastwood Avenue, and removing residence-only parking District 5 on Davis Street, two separate things. We ask your approval to introduce ordinance 25013, which if adopted, will amend the Class Y liquor license to permit the sale of alcoholic liquor, spirits, wine, and unrefrigerated beer for off-premise consult, consumption. We ask your approval for action. City Council should adopt 60, 6013, amending Title 10 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Section 1012-2, providing for the ability for the city to issue city code violations in accordance with the Illinois Vehicle Code. This was introduced on the February 11 meeting. The Planning and Development Committee met this evening, and we ask your approval to consider a first-time application for a sidewalk café, permit for pre-demanger, Type II restaurant located at 1701 Sherman Avenue. The next one is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, the Housing and Homeless Commission, homelessness commission and staff recommend the approval of $458,777 forgivable home loan for the rehab of 10 rental units to housing options for the mentally ill from home funds, which currently has a balance of, let's see, what is that, balance of 1.1 million. Next, we ask your approval for introduction of ordinance 22013, which grants major zoning relief to convert seven required off-street parking spaces into an outdoor seating area and bicycle parking at Smiley Brothers Restaurant and Brewery for a total of zero off-street parking spaces. Next, we ask your approval to, let's see, I have to read this correctly, to overturn the Plan Commission's denial, and this is ordinance 2013, amending the zoning ordinance text to create a new overlay zoning district, which will require certain types of new retail uses, such as hair salons, nail salons, beauty shops, and barber shops to operate only by special use in the Howard Ridge Tiff District. It's for introduction. For introduction also is ordinance 3013, that amends the zoning map by placing properties in the Howard Ridge Tiff District into the new overlay zoning district, which will require certain types of new retail uses, such as hair salons, nail salons, beauty shops, and barber shops to operate only by special use in this district. The, this is for introduction, and it requests that you reject the Plan Commission's denial. Next, under Human Services, staff recommends approval, and I'm assuming the Human Services Committee as well, approval of Resolutions 5 R13 regarding the payment of accrued water bills owed to the city by the Evanston-Wilmett Golf Course Association for the Frank McGovern Memorial Golf Course. This is for action tonight. Madam Mayor has recommended the appointments to the Human Relations Commission of Ann Stein and the Plan Commission Melanie Johnson. With this, Madam Mayor, the consent agenda is complete, and I move approval.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, seeing no lights for discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The consent agenda is passed. Alderman Grover, could you give us Administration and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As to Agenda Item A 3.3, the committee, Administration Public Works declined to approve the contract for a one-year bid award with three one-year option renewals for transmission repairs to ATR Transmissions. Given questions the committee had about the bidding process in that case, there was only one successful bidder despite significant outreach by our staff to reach Evanston-based enterprises to bid on this. And we did hear from one local business owner who felt as if he could have perhaps bid on that, whether or not a deadline issue, but also a question about the information that was put out in the bid request, in the bid specs. So this comes to council with a 5-0 vote against, and I think there may have been room to approve a one-year bid award for this transmission contract with ATR Transmissions, or to turn it back and reopen the bidding altogether. All we did in committee was reject it.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I, I'm not totally clear on what the problem was with the bidding process. Unfortunately, I'm not on the committee, so, and I missed that, so.
City Manager, did you want to respond to that?
Let me try to summarize the discussion. There was concern that there was only one proposal received. There was a, a local Evanston businessperson who appeared before the committee, who does transmissions, who detailed his confusion about the bid, his reaching out to get some additional information from staff that he was not able to receive. He indicated that he had missed the deadline, but I think inferred that had he gotten the information, he would have applied. And I think it was the feeling of the committee that perhaps a better work could be done to encourage and make it easier for all businesses to bid on these kind of contracts, but especially Evanston businesses. So after that discussion, the committee decided to reject this. Without, without any further action, staff would then either just bid out the individual transmissions that need to be done for a period of time, which has, has been some past practice for other types of medium-to-heavy work that's done on vehicles, or we would rebid the entire contract.
And do we know if the contract, if the single bidder was interested in a one-year contract?
I don't believe we do not. The, the, the single bidder is the current incumbent that performs this work for us.
So, yeah, so we just don't know the answer to that?
I, I think there was some concern. Ms. Robinson, in her testimony before the committee, indicated that now, since there is the one bidder's prices, that they may not, no longer be interested in participating, because their competition would now know what the floor or ceiling, I guess, depending on how you look at it, would be. So I think from a staff perspective, we are perfectly happy. If the council wishes to reject this, we'll go back and come up with alternative ways. As I've mentioned to the committee, the council is aware that we are making some staffing changes in our purchasing session, section of the Finance Division. I think it's our intention overall to improve the quality of our purchasing processes with that staffing change. So if, if it's the council's comfort to, to disapprove this, then...
I, yeah, I, I see the problem with what Ms. Robinson pointed out. If, if we put this out there, we put the pricing out after the bids open, it's after the deadline. I'm not really hearing that there was something wrong with the bidding process. I mean, it's going to be hard to get vendors to bid on things if, if this is what we're going to be doing.
Well, the gentleman, for example, that was here, the Evanston-based transmission repair individual, mentioned that we had bid out based on types of vehicles we have. The models that, of the vehicles we have come in different configurations, and based on those different configurations, have different transmission needs, some of which could vary greatly. He did comment on the price, that he didn't see how a company could, could do the work for the price that was provided. Parenthetically, again, this is, the firm's already doing this work for us. So I think the, the committee went around and, and talked about this. From a staff perspective, while we did do a lot of work to go through this, if there is not a comfort level, you know, we would, we would rather just move forward, and, and we'll come up with alternate ways to get transmissions done, with the understanding that we're going to be improving our overall purchasing processes and hopefully avoiding these sort of things in the future. One last point, I did raise the issue of the expectation of the council in dealing with local vendors. The colloquialism of hand-holding was used, and I think there was a split feeling on the council. Some members of the council were only looking for clear and fair policies. Other members of the council said, well, we should do everything possible to make it as easy as possible for our Evanston-based businesses to participate in these processes fairly. So, you know, certainly, I agree that, that we should do that. I think it's a, a matter of staffing as to how much hand-holding we ultimately do. So lots of issues were discussed, and I think based on all of that, the committee just felt it was the most reasonable course to reject the bid.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I'd just like to add another little layer to this, and that is, we, we make rules and guidelines to help Evanston businesses get a leg up on things. And so, the real advantage of that is in the smaller bids. We know there are lots of transmission places in Evanston that could bid on this job. The one that came in with, with the only bid is the one that we've had for a while and is out of town. What seems to me to be the problem here is that we assume, and I'm part of the group that doesn't think that our transmission people are all that sophisticated, but it seems to me that while they complained about not knowing this and not knowing that, what is the real problem is they don't have experience in filling out bid forms. And I think that we should do more outreach, pre-bidding, for pre-bid conferences on small bids like this. We knew, our staff knew about all these vendors, and our staff reached out to them. But I think we reached out too late. We reached out after the bids went out. I don't think staff was really understanding that these companies could use a little tutoring prior to the event. And so that's, that's why I thought it was very strange, only, only the current vendor bid, and the rest all complained. We, we followed up and we called them, but they, they just didn't have their act together to bid. And I think if we're going to have these rules, we ought to make it so that they can succeed. And, and whether that, that qualifies for holding up this bid, I don't know. I said I would be prepared to, you know, vote for a one-year term, but this was like a one-year term with three years of extensions, and, and I didn't think that was right.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Alderman Wilson, I was one of the ones that just wants a fair and open process. One of the ones that want that. I, I looked at this, there's nine, there were nine proposals, and only one positive one that came, and only one response. And that is the current vendor that we have now. And there was a gentleman here tonight who represented one of the other businesses, and his complaint was the same as number one, two, three, four, five, in terms of not having enough information. And he talked about, I think it was 150 Fords, and that there are all different kinds of motors, or whatever it is, different, well, transmissions, but they're different. He said from 1999 to 2008, there would be a, just a whole variety of different kinds of transmissions that you could use in that. And he called the city to ask for that information. And the calls go directly to purchase, rather than to, to Dr. Robinson, Mr. Jeskey. So I just thought maybe there was a connection broken there. I just felt that, you know, it would be better to hold it or pull it and, and go back out. I just don't feel that it is fair. You get somebody else that's complaining about the same thing. If you read what Crawford Golf, Crawford Auto Services says, it's basically the same thing that J and B Transmission came and said to us tonight, the same, not having the right or enough information to make a proper bid. And since we do have another way of dealing with it by doing them as we need to, I believe that's what Director Robinson said, that, that we could do that until we can figure out a way to do this in a more fair... a way to do this in a more fair process. So that's, that was my concern.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Wilson, I was also one of the ones that recommended that we reject or hold this proposal. There are a couple of just comments I want to make really quick. And within the past two years of council, one of the things that I've heard over a period of time, and that's just because I think the amount of retail that's in the second ward is a frustration and a perception that it is difficult to do business within the city of Evanston. And so for the past couple of years, particularly with the MWB Committee, that's been just our goal, to really change that perception and try to do business with more of our local EBEs. That's our focus. Last week, or maybe two weeks ago, we did the Evanston Procurement Fair, and I really focused, and I said thank you so much to staff. Without a doubt, we had 35 businesses there represented within the group, and without a doubt, there was an overwhelming feeling of just satisfaction to get the information out there. And so when I looked at this, the results of this package, there's information there. So clearly, there was the outreach, but when you read the comments, they're just consistently that we missed something. And I don't want to have to go through and point out, but I would be willing, because I think this is very revealing. Here we have several businesses in Evanston, some claim that they didn't even receive the packet. I'm thankful for the one person on Gulf Crawford Auto who mentioned that it wasn't feasible. So we asked for apples. We didn't say what color, we didn't say what size, there's Fuji, Gala, and the list goes on. And imagine just how complicated a transmission is. And that's what I heard from the owner of JB Transmissions. He basically shared, in a condensed way, his frustration with the information that he could, or potentially could get into a situation where he would lose money. And I, and he didn't say it tonight, but he shared his feelings that he really takes pride in the quality of his work, and he would question anyone that would do it so cheaply. And I guess I asked the same question, how can someone all the way out in Mundaline provide a good quality service at such a cheap rate? And maybe by going out and looking at this bid package again, we'll be able to get to some of those results. Or at least, that's my hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Well, I agree with Alderman Rainey's points on making sure that this process is as effective as possible. I'm still just very troubled by the idea of rejecting the bid, though, based on what I've heard, because we want people to bid on things, and just, we don't want out-of-town bidders not to bid, because they're going to be afraid that we're going to publish their prices and say, you know what? Somebody thought it was due on a different day, somebody wasn't aware of the 2:00 p.m. deadline, didn't receive it, didn't receive it. There's a lot of stuff here on here that aren't good enough reasons, and I'm not really seeing where our staff fell down or failed to put everybody who was sent the bid package on equal footing. If I had some information that, certainly the one who's doing the work now knows what's involved, right, because they know what all the trucks are. But I'll just defer to the committee, because they had more information than I did, but I sure don't want to see something like this happen again, where, you know, we're presenting something and opening the bids and just throwing it out because of a couple complaints, unless there's some tangible, tangible reasons for something that reflects that it was not fair.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I think this is a different case, because this isn't a matter where a whole lot of bidders bid, and we've decided to reject them all. This is where the current vendor is the only bidder. I think actually the other perception could be true, and that is that we want a much more fairer process, and we're going to give it a shot to include more people, to be more inclusive. However, however, I said before, if this vendor would be willing to keep his price for the first year and do a one-year contract, I would be willing to support that. And if he wouldn't, then we would be told right away, and we would start the process over. But it does, it just doesn't seem right, Alderman Wilson, what happened here. And, you know, my first thought was that the staff did a really good job reaching out, trying to get these people in, but when you look at it a little more deeply and listen to the people who were the recipients, or supposed recipients of the bid package, it didn't sound fair to me.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, if I may just add, I guess I'm a little concerned about the word "fair" being used here. And I guess my characterization is not a matter of unfairness, it's a matter of completeness. And I think that what I'm hearing from the council is if there's going to be a follow-up, the follow-up doesn't occur at the 11 and a half hour, and then us coming back to you and saying, well, gee, we followed up, aren't we smart? I really think this is a matter of completeness. I'm committed to making sure that as we move forward with all of our purchasing activities, that we are more complete in our processes, and if we can develop even more fair processes in the future, we'll do that as well.
That's what I meant.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No, we don't.
Would we like to have a motion?
The committee rejected.
Okay, so you just want to leave it at that? All right, we're done. Alderman Grover, that concludes your report.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and no one else has anything to report? P. 2? All right. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for Planning and Development Committee. P. 2, we're holding that in committee.
Thank you. Alderman Tandem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to put this, I know, I'm not trying to rush the process on this at all, but I would like to put it in a different context, or some, tell you some of the things we've learned about the land trust proposal. And, you know, the federal government now isn't asking us to be hasty, but they are looking at timely use of funds. This is a bit of a shift in the way the federal government is looking at things. And being thoughtful, but also being timely is a real plus. They love Evanston. We have both the need, but also the capacity, the capacity to provide these services, and that is, it's a very positive thing on our side. I think the committee at the Housing and Homelessness Commission didn't want to let this become an issue that's going to come up, you know, wait till August, when this money really has to be spent. I'd like to be really active and proactive in getting this back to the committee, or back to the staff, to really, you know, come up with something that we can vote positively on and get this money spent. That's, I think it's very important. I think it's, you know, again, not to ask, not to act hastily, but actually to be very wise and very timely.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the committee, Planning and Development reconsiders or deliberates the home funds for CIPA, Community Partners for Affordable Housing, I hope that the discussion will include what the repercussions would be. What the repercussions would be in requiring CIPA to identify the property before coming back for approval of the funds, and what the repercussions are for both the timeliness of their ability to acquire that property and competitively acquire it in market, in the market the way it is, and whether the committee could also include a larger discussion of the land trust model of property ownership by CIPA, and how that benefits the residents who will either rent or own the property.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
That's pretty much what I was going to say.
All right. So it's held in committee, and we're off to the races. At call of the wards. Alderman Holmes?
Madam Mayor, I just would like to tell the council about the play, The Circle. If you're not doing anything tomorrow evening, may I suggest you go to the Music Institute to see the play. It is excellent, and it's done by a Native American, Native Evanstonian. Yeah, it is. Tina Leford, who was born and raised here in Evanston, and it was just a really joy to see her again, but also just to have someone come back to the community. So I hope people have a chance to go tomorrow evening and see the play.
Thank you. Alderman Tandem?
No report tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I have some bad news, and that is that the Evanston Township High School Girls' Basketball Team lost their super sectional game tonight against Rolling Meadows by about 20 points. Word is that they played well, they played hard, but didn't score enough points. So it was a great season.
That's a problem.
I think the team lost maybe two games the entire season, make that three if you add tonight. So an extraordinary season, and many of the players, our girls, will be back next year to play as well. A happy birthday to Alderman Tandem, that was yesterday. And I also want to warn everyone that Northwestern Men's Basketball has two more home games this season, and they both fall on Thursday nights at 6:00. That would be rush hour. So the first game is this week, Thursday night, they play Ohio State. It's a sellout game. It will be, and I'm signaling to Mr. McCray, who's doing the Ohio, Script Ohio over there. So that'll be a sellout game at 6:00 tip-off, so it's rush hour. And the other will be a week from Thursday night on March 7, and that's against Penn State. I'm not sure if it's sellout, but it will be a big 10-conference game. Apologies in advance, brace yourselves.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a huge turnout at Ward 8 this week to celebrate their nomination for one of the five best new bars in the Chicagoland area. And just want to let you know, I don't think we've talked about this before, but we've been given permission to mention this, that we are moving ahead with our discussions with Culvers, which is a butter burger.
Custard.
Custard, fast food restaurant of a much upper scale, I hear, than some. They actually bring the food to your table. I don't know if you have to clean it off or not, but they do bring it. And we met, the economic development team and I met, with Mr. Culver. And he was.
Is it actual Mr. Culver?
The actual Mr. Craig Culver. Yes, we certainly did. And he spent the time we were meeting autographing coupons, which he then handed out to everybody in the Target coffee shop. It was really great. Anyway, it was a wonderful meeting, and look forward to having a Culvers in the Howard Harfey Shop, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burrus?
Yes. On Saturday night, actually, Alderman Rainey and I attended the Boys' Hope, Girls' Hope fundraiser, and there are homes here in Evanston for the Boys' Hope and Girls' Hope. Met some incredible young people, and just want to say congratulations to many of those young people that received awards and will be going off to college very soon. Just inspirational talks from these young people, what they've been through, what they've accomplished, what that program does for these young people, and I'm so thrilled that we have those homes here in Evanston, and I hopefully will support those in the future.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank everybody who turned out for the Dog Beach Meeting last Saturday morning. About 25 folks were there. It was a really good discussion, and I also want to thank city staff for showing up. Anyone who was not able to attend and wants to make comments, you can still do so on EngageEvanston.org. Is that correct? Okay. EngageEvanston.org. And the first ward meeting that's coming up is Tuesday, March 5, at the library, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. I hope to see you all there. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to thank all the residents of the second ward, who came out on the February 21st ward meeting. Next month, March 14, we'll resume to our second Thursday of each month. I'd also like to make a referral to the Plan Commission to consider a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that would permit an indoor recreation facility as a special use in an I-2 district. And so we have Team Evanston, who was recently looking at the Oakton Recycling Facility with baseball, I think lacrosse team, are looking for a home in the second ward. And so we're looking to make that referral to the Plan Commission, just to ease their process. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, several of us on the council on Saturday night were at the YOU Annual Benefit, which was really inspiring. Seth Green, their executive director, spoke really powerfully about the good work that YOU does. I believe their numbers of Evanston schoolchildren that they are now helping is increasing. Correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Tandem and Grover, I believe to 1,100, is that right? Yes, that's right. It was a terrific event, and I think they, we raised, they raised close to $200,000. So that was terrific. This is an early warning, but to let everyone know in the third ward that we're having a town hall meeting on March 14 at Lincoln School, which has been renovated, so we're back at Lincoln School again, March 14, Thursday, from 7:00 to 8:30. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Do you have a motion you'd like?
I have a motion. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C5, C6, C11, and C21.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.